Yeah, ready. You ready? Ready? I got four, I think.
Yeah. I have.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this Monday, February 3rd, meeting of Garrett County Commissioners. I want to welcome a full house of people here and anyone that's watching online. Thanks for coming. First order of business, if you would, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then Commissioner Titchnell will lead us in the invocation. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the good life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, in the visible, with a reading and justice for all.
If you would, bow with me for a word prayer, please. Precious and loving Heavenly Father, Lord, we just come together here today praising and glorifying you. And Lord, may I ask that you be with us through this meeting and that everything we say and do would be pleasing to you. Lord, we continue to thank you for the many blessings that you give us, and we do all this in thy precious holy name. Amen.
All right, Mr. Knoll, are there any additions, additions, corrections to the public meeting agenda?
Yes, sir. We're going to add one item to the agenda. That's a proclamation in support of community action.
All right. We will add that right before the economic development update. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So move.
We have a motion on second.
Second.
Motion on second, amended agenda approved by mutual consent. Everybody got a copy of the minutes in advance of the meeting? Any changes, corrections, concerns with the minutes? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minute.
And motion on second.
Second.
Motion on second. Minutes approved by mutual consent. The first order of business on the agenda, we have a couple of introductions we want to make here before we get into the meat of the agenda. The first one, I am pleased to welcome back my buddy from Locklin. I want to recognize the newly elected and not new mayor because he was mayor for it. We were mayor friends before. So, welcome back Larry Friend as the mayor of Locklin Heights, and congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards, Titchnell, and Savage. I thank you for allowing me to be on your agenda. I'd like to actually extend my thanks to the county government and all departments for the help and resources and so forth for our town. As you know, and just like he just mentioned, that I was mayor from 2000 to 2008, and I had to, I had to step back for personal reasons, but I didn't know I was ever going to be back in here again, but here I am. So, you wonder sometimes if you're dysfunctional when you do those things. Anyhow, I know over the years that they've been very helpful, and just little resources like engineering, different things like that for the town, and it's been really helpful for us. And because of the, being a small town, we're one of the smallest towns in, probably in the state of Maryland, we have about 500 residents, 200 homes, and resources is hard to come by. And it's nice to know that we have somebody in the county that you can go to and be able to get things from. It's like, you know, it's just, it's just a great benefit. And this is all on behalf of the citizens of Locklin, and of course, we have our council members, I'm going to mention those, those are Barbara Rexrode, and some of these you may know, Max Hill, Bryce Canfield, and John Rose are my council. And they said, "We also extend the thank you for what you've done." The previous mayor, you've been Mayor Corley, she's been exceptional. She has done a great job. She took over the position after I left 16 years ago, and now here I am again. So, I'm hoping I can continue with the legacy and continue to do good things for the town. Like I said, I served with Commissioner Edwards for, when he was mayor of Grantsville, and we started the Garrett, they call it Garrett County Municipalities Incorporated now, which is really, really beneficial to all the mayors in the town, or in the county. And that way, we don't all go after grants and stuff all at the same time and try to compete against one another. We help each other. So, that's a big plus. I'd also like to mention, Commissioner Titchnell, years ago, ball fields, he did a lot of playing softball. And of course, we got the fields in Locklin were the fields that they used, and now those fields are probably the capital of soccer in Garrett County, at least in the southern end of the county. And there's more people there in most evenings than there is residents in the town. So, just to let you know how much, and there again, you guys have been really helpful in keeping those up and helping us with things there. So, we certainly appreciate that. And now, I haven't worked with Mr. Savage, but I'm looking forward to working with you also. So, just a sign that, something that I kind of feel that needs to be mentioned, that field was originally named after a good person in this, from this area. He started the, he started the youth, I guess, little league, and then he was involved with his girls softball, and that was Charlie Grove. And that field is actually named after him, but I don't want that legacy to end. I think that he needs to remain the legacy because he loved kids and he did a great job. And that's one of the reasons that I want to see that grow. But anyhow, it's just, it's just an honor to have people like you. I know, as soon as I was sworn in, I said, I want to get on your agenda to thank these guys because I knew that you worked with us before, and it's just been a great, great thing to do. And also, the, I don't know how many Christmas cards you get from people, but I don't get a whole lot from the town when you're in these positions, and probably don't for the county either, but it's just nice to hear someone thank you once while, seriously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. Appreciate it. All right. I'd also like to introduce our new airport manager, Addison Wire. Addison, you don't have to speak if you don't want to, but if there's anything you'd like to share, take that as a no. So, if you have anything going on at the airport, or if you have any questions about anything at the airport, Addison's your guy. You can reach out at any time. He is now currently on duty and doing the job. So, welcome aboard, Addison.
Mr., a shameless plug for our airport, for Wings and Wheels. Every summer, if you haven't been to Wings and Wheels, it's a big event, and weather permitting, it's a great event for you and all your family. So, Addison is going to be driving the planes up there, so to speak, this year, so y'all come out and be a part of the airport. We've got one on there.
All right. Thank you. Okay. We're going to do the proclamation next that was added to the agenda. Chris, thanks for coming in. Chris Mullet with Community Action. As many of you probably know, if you've been paying any attention at all to the national news, there has been some pausing of federal dollars being spent in a lot of ways. There was a stay put in place recently to reopen the flow of some of those dollars, but there's some question about how that money's going to continue to flow or not. I believe, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, there's an effort amongst the community action committees across the state, and maybe further, to garner support from municipal and county, and I'm sure state governments, to talk about the importance of the funding, to fund these programs that are very important to the citizens of Garrett County. Would that be an accurate statement?
It is, in that I spoke to the Maryland Community Action Partnership this morning and told them that I was doing this, and they are thrilled, and they're all going to do it. And I've talked to them, I'm waiting to hear back from the National Community Action Partnership because we think that if county commissions, you know, all politics is local, so if we just start with the people that are doing the work as close to the people as possible, then it can spread from there. So, I'm thrilled. I'm just absolutely thrilled.
Okay. So, and thank you for facilitating that. So, I will go ahead and read this proclamation into the minutes, and then, Chris, I'll give it to you so that you can put it with your records and share it with your colleagues. So, this proclamation says, "Whereas Garrett County Community Action Committee Incorporated provides essential services and programs that significantly enhance the quality of life for the residents of Garrett County, Maryland, including but not limited to," and this is the important part, "Head Start, Section 8 HUD Housing Vouchers, Meals on Wheels, Rental Assistance, Homeless Services, Utility Assistance, Emergency Food and Shelter, Weatherization, First-Time Home Buyers, Garrett Transit System, Independent Living, Senior Embodments, Congregate Senior Meals, and Senior Home Modification Programs. Whereas these programs bring a total of $10,674,380 in federally funded assistance and programming to the people of Garrett County, Maryland. Whereas interruptions to funding significantly impact Garrett County Community Action Committee's ability to deliver services effectively, and without these services, the children, families, and seniors living in Garrett County will have a lower quality of life. Whereas over 25% of our county's 28,000 residents benefit directly from these services, and all Garrett County residents benefit from the improved quality of life that these services create in our communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Garrett County Commissioners hereby declares its full support for uninterrupted funding for the programs conducted by the Garrett County Community Action Committee Incorporated. Be it further resolved that this proclamation is made on February 3rd, 2025, and will be sent to our state and federal legislative delegations to emphasize the importance of maintaining continuous funding for these critical services, signed by the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, Maryland, Commissioners Titchnell, Savage, and myself." So, Chris, thanks for going to go. Anything else you'd like to say?
I do. Last Tuesday was maybe the worst day of my life professionally. We had no idea when we were driving in that morning, Regina is our VP of Operations, Regina Gerhardt, she and I were talking, as I was coming in that morning, how we were going to lay off 80 Head Start employees and tell 200 students and their families that they had nowhere to go. That's what our last Tuesday was. By the end of the day, because of the massive pushback, we were, we had access to funding for that program, but not for others. The reality is that landlords would very quickly not get their rent checks from people that have Section 8 vouchers through us. We serve over a quarter of the people in Garrett County, and that's largely true of community actions across the United States. And so, I was sitting there this morning thinking about this, and I thought, you know what? Our commission has been incredibly responsive and helpful, and if every, there's a community action in every county in the United States, if every county commission would step up and do what you're doing, they will hear us loud and clear and know that they cannot stop these funds from flowing. So, I started with the people who have, you know, Mr. Rogers said, "Look for the helpers." I started with you guys because you guys have been the helpers, and I love that. So, thank you. Thank all of you for being here, and yeah, so. Thank you all very much. Thank you. And I got to say, I don't know how other, thank you, Kevin. I don't know how other counties and their administrators work together, but if there's a better county administrator than Kevin Knoll, I don't know about it. In the basic, thank you.
All right. Before we get into the next items on the agenda, I am going to take some executive privilege and make some comments on some things that have come up at our last meeting and since our last meeting. Four things in particular, so bear with me as I hopefully clarify some things and discuss some of our thoughts on how we're going to move forward to some of the things that we've been specifically asked about. First, I would like to address, Mr. Dabney, last meeting brought up to us and made a request that we look into petitioning our state delegation on changing our charter and the way that we elect county commissioners. We had a good discussion about that from a philosophical standpoint at the last meeting. I stand by my comments that respectfully disagree that the way we do it is not the best way to do it for Garrett County. I did pull the charter, and the specific part of the charter that discusses the election is 30.02, County Commissioner Districts Procedures for Election and Vacancies, and Mr. Dabney made the comment that we were not following said charter. Specifically, I think, and Mr. Dabney, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you mentioned specifically the general election. The way this reads, the beginning of this talks about the districts, the first part, first, second, and third point, and this is on the website, it's also at the state level, you can look this up very simply, just talks about what the district should be, which are exactly what they are. And then it talks about the election. In Section B, it says, "Election. All future elections for the office of County Commissioner, one Commissioner shall be elected from among the voters residing in each County Commissioner District by the general vote of the county," which is exactly what we do. Then it goes into Letter C, which says, "Procedure at primary elections," and it says, "One candidate for each party shall be chosen from each County Commissioner District by the countywide vote of the members of the respective parties," which is exactly what we do. It goes on to say, "The candidate of each party from each County Commissioner District who receives the greatest number of votes shall be certified by the supervisors of the election as a nominee of the political party to which he or she belongs, and the name of the nominee should be placed on the official ballot to be used in a general election." Again, exactly what happens here, and then it talks about the general election being done the same way. So, that is the way that it's coded, that's the way that it's put in the state archives, that's the way that we do it. So, the request of would we look to change it, I speak on behalf of the commission, we will take no action on that, and I will reiterate, and I think they share the same thought. The most important thing to me is, the people of Garrett County put this system in place at some point in time or another, and we all agree that only the people of Garrett County should have the authority and the ability to change that, and that no one from Baltimore, or St. Mary's County, or Annapolis in the legislature should change that without the local people having the ultimate authority to do so. So, hopefully that answers that question, and that's where we stand on that particular issue. Another issue that was brought up at our last meeting, and it has come up a couple of times, is the idea of modifying or requesting legislation to change the transfer tax and accommodations tax. That would require, as most of you know, because of the system of government we have, based on our charter, that we can only do that through the legislature, we cannot do that locally. And so, the request was made specifically for us to petition Senator McKay and Delegate Heimball to change the transfer tax, and the thought behind that was that we could use that tax to work on an issue that all of us agree is an issue which is attainable housing in Garrett County. The insinuation made at the last meeting was that Garrett County does not have a plan to tackle this nationwide problem of affordable housing, and attainable housing, we like the term attainable. I would respectfully disagree with that. I think we have a plan. We've articulated that plan for the last couple of years. That plan is a three-phase plan that starts with the project in Grantsville. The second phase of that will be the project in McHenry, and the third phase of that will be the project in Oakland. We think that is important to hit all parts of the county, the north, the center, and the southern end. Not only do we have that laid out, Grantsville is currently, as we speak, taking reservations for a house online. If you're interested in that, you can go to the website and check that out. And if you would like to entertain the idea of purchasing one of those homes, you can sign up to be put on the waiting list. Ground is broken on that particular project. And also, last week, we went ahead and moved forward with preliminary engineering plans for the project in McHenry, so we'll move forward with that. The way that we have created this opportunity to do this is unique. It's forward-thinking, and it's got a lot of buzz in the regional and mid-Atlantic area, much like what we've done with broadband expansion, which has got nationwide rave reviews for how to do it in a rural setting. This methodology of the land trust and how we're looking to do attainable housing in Garrett County has received a lot of recognition in the region. Most notably, Congressman Trone, before he left office, used our model as the model in the district for other areas that are trying to do the same thing. And I think more notably, Dr. Bauer with the Federal Reserve, based out of Atlanta, who represents basically the East Coast, has been using our project as the model that he's taking everywhere he goes to say, "This is how you do affordable, attainable housing, especially in rural areas." So, we think we have a very good plan in place. We think we have figured out how to do it. We have a short, medium, and long-range plan. And between those three projects, and the other project that's going on in Grantsville, and the project that's planned for accident, there'll be roughly 1,000 new homes just in those, and that's not counting anything going on in McHenry and those things, over the next decade or so. And they're coming in, if Grantsville is the model, even in this inflationary environment, they're coming in at price points which show that the average Garrett Countyan can afford to buy those homes. So, we're very excited about that. At this time, we have put very little Garrett County taxpayer money into those projects. We have braided many state and national grants into facilitating these projects, and we have the money for the preliminary engineering in the McHenry project. So, we do not need the money to move forward right now with what our plans are. I speak on behalf of the commission. The decision is, we are not going to seek to raise the transfer tax or the accommodations tax at this time, or any other tax for that matter. However, as we move forward and the preliminary engineering comes back and we have a better idea of exactly what we need to do, then we may have to relook at that down the road of how we would fund that, and this could potentially be part of that conversation. But at this point in time, there will not be a petition to our delegation to raise any of our taxes. Another thing that has come up since the last meeting was the issue of paper gaming. I don't know how familiar some of you in the room are with that. I know in some circles, it's a big deal, in some circles, it is not. We know that many of our nonprofits do the lion's share of fundraising through paper gaming. The reason this became an issue is, a couple of months ago, maybe several months ago, we had a petition from a for-profit business who wanted to also have the ability to do paper gaming, tip jars, pool tabs, that type of thing. When the law, when the ordinance was passed at the state of Maryland, I believe in '06, it was an ordinance that covered Washington County, Allegheny County, and Garrett County all the same. And each county has done it slightly differently. And the question became, in that petition, to see if we would allow for-profit gaming to be done, there was insinuation that we were not following our charter, or our ordinance, I'm sorry, the ordinance. We looked into it, we decided that the only thing that we were not 100% in compliance with was the issuance of a permit. Because the person who had made the petition, put some things out, as I understand it, on social media, a lot of rumors started circulating of what was going to happen and how this may impact what the status quo has been in Garrett County, so on and so forth. There was a tremendous amount of misinformation out there. So, Mr. Knoll asked if he could hold an informational meeting, especially with the bricks and mortar businesses that do this, that basically survive on tip jars, allegiance, the elk, so on and so forth, and fire companies. So, Mr. Knoll held an informational meeting at the college. It was not a public hearing, it was never promoted as a public hearing, it was an informational meeting to basically say what we have believed all along and stand firm on, we never intended to tax or charge nonprofits. We do not intend to do that moving forward, and as long as we're commissioners, that will not happen. We have spoken with our delegation of changing the language for Garrett County within the ordinance to pull that out, to prevent future boards of commissioners from doing that, and maintaining non-charging for nonprofits that rely on this. That may be very difficult because the ordinance was written for three counties, but nonetheless, we will attempt to do that. So, the takeaway is, nothing is changing. For-profit businesses, that particular individual has withdrawn his request, so there is no request on the table to allow for-profit gaming, for-profit businesses to do paper gaming in Garrett County. It is not our intention to allow that, and it is not our intention to change anything that the nonprofits have done, except possibly for the issuance of a permit, which we will not charge for, to have that, and we will be in full compliance with the ordinance as it is written. So, hopefully that clears some things up with that. And finally, the other thing that has come out that many of you in the room probably do not know about, but I encourage you, and we encourage you, to educate yourself on this. Senator McKay put a bill in the Senate in relation to transmission lines and power lines, and the Cliff's Notes version of this is, the way that I understand it, and I'm not going to say that I'm an authority on this because I am not, and if you have further questions, I did talk with the senator today, he did say that anyone that had further questions could reach out to him directly. But the way that I understand it, from ACO and from talking to Senator McKay and Delegate Heimball, and some others at length over the last several days, is they're building data centers in Virginia, and there's not enough power, there's a question of whether there's enough power to run all these data centers. And they're making power in southwest Pennsylvania and in Ohio, and they want to get that power from there to the data centers. And in order to do that, they have to run new transmission lines. And there's a company, and that company's name is Next Era, that is attempting to build those transmission lines, which would go through Garrett County and a small part of Allegheny County, down into Virginia, and connect then the power plants around the Pittsburgh region to the data centers in the DC region. We know very little about this. What I'll tell you is, several months ago, Next Era came to meet with us, each one of us individually. They gave us 100,000-foot view of kind of what they, basically what I just told you, there's needed power here, there's power here, and we want to be the conduit to get the power. the power there. And they said that they might have to run some lines through the county. They told us that they would give us a map, and more information would be to come. We have not seen that information yet. I have spoken with the lobbyists from that company and requested that they send some information to us, a one-pager, so that we had some talking points. I have not received that yet. We have not received that yet. Senator McKay's bill, and this is where it gets very complicated and hard to understand. Senator McKay's bill would allow power companies, in particular Next Era, to run the transmission lines and extend the transmission lines and build new transmission lines in state, in state forests and state ground. Right now, Paton McEdison has power lines in the state forests. The way I understand the bill, where those lines exist, these new lines would have to be in that right-of-way. But it does call for an extension of areas of state forests where these transmission lines could be constructed. The bill Senator McKay put in place does not say permit this, permit this project. It would give Next Era a opportunity to use more state ground to extend those if a permit is given out. The Public Service Commission, the PSC, is who will issue a permit if a permit is issued. So it's a separate issue from the bill. If that bill fails and Next Era cannot use state ground, my guess is, and I'm speaking a little bit out of school, they're still going to permission the PSC for a permit to run the power lines, and they would look for an alternate route. The concerning part of that, and this is where people need to be engaged in the conversation, is once that petition goes to the PSC for a permit, if it is granted, and it is deemed by the PSC that this is an emergency, I'm not sure exactly what the terminology is, forgive me, but it would grant Next Era, as a private for-profit company, the ability to claim eminent domain, to build the power lines. What I will tell you is this, as it stands right now, just speaking about Senator McKay's bill, not the power line, not the permit, just Senator McKay's bill, we are not going to support it and we are not going to oppose it, because we do not have near enough information or facts about what is happening with this to get involved. I did speak with DNR today. They, as of right now, today, are not in a position to take a position, and said, as of right now, today, they are not issuing any statements or weighing in, they're waiting for more information. My guess is, they will weigh in eventually, but as of right this minute, they have not done so. What I can also tell you unequivocally, and all of us agree completely on this, none of us sitting up here agree at all, as a matter of fact, would vehemently oppose any private for-profit entity to have the ability to claim eminent domain. We will oppose that. If it becomes an issue, we will not support that, and that's secondary to Senator McKay's bill. That's the actual permit process. If you followed the controversy in center Maryland, it's basically the exact same thing, minus going on state property. What they wanted to do in center Maryland, and particularly Carroll County, Baltimore County, I think Anne Rundle County, and down, is to do the exact same thing and take power from power plants in the center of Pennsylvania, run them through the center of Maryland to connect to the DC area to help fund data centers and beef up the grid. That got really controversial really fast, because there's a lot more private property that would be impacted there, and so there's a lot more of an opportunity if a permit was issued for the power company, which is, I don't think it's Next Era, I think it's a different company, would be able to claim eminent domain, and those people fought against it. The governor weighed in, different people weighed in on that. I think that's still unresolved as we sit here. This project is not at the stage yet to go to the permitting process, but one other thing that we are going to do is, we are going to request that Next Era come out here and hold some informational meetings with people, so they know, you know, where this is. What I can tell you is, they did send, Delegate Heimball just sent me a map right before the meeting started. It is not a detailed map, and it is certainly not a map of all the, this is exactly where it's going. It's basically an oblong oval in the center of the county that shows where it may go. My guess is, and again, speculation on my part admittedly, so they're reluctant to say it's going to go here, because they're waiting to see whether or not the state's going to let them go on state ground or not. If they will, they'll probably draw it, so it goes mostly through state ground. If they don't, then they'll have to redraw it, and it will probably hit more private properties. But it is on the northern end of the county, and it's basically the Friendsville, Grantsville, Benninger, Appleton area, Finsel area that would be impacted by this project if it happens. So I just put that out there. This is something that just kind of started getting traction recently, when Senator McKay dropped his bill, and that got people talking, and rightly so. And so now there's a big question of, what does this mean? And so more to come on that. Just throw that out there primarily for informational purposes, because I know most people are completely unaware of this at all, or just starting to become aware of it. So we want you to be aware of it, especially if you own property that could potentially be impacted by it. But I do want to state unequivocally that this board of commissioners will openly oppose any effort by for-profit enterprise to be granted the power of eminent domain. So with all of that said, and thank you for indulging me for those explanations, I know that many of you in the room are here to discuss one of those four items, if not multiple of those items, which we welcome you to do. Because of the number of people in the room and the number that have expressed to me that they want to speak tonight in some way, shape, or form, we're certainly going to do that, but we have probably 20 to 25 minutes to get through the rest of the agenda before we go to public question and comment. We are going to deviate slightly from what we've done really for the last 10 years. Everyone will have an opportunity to speak. All that we would ask is that you speak once instead of multiple times. So I'm telling you that now, so you can collect your thoughts, because we have a lot of people, I think, that we're going to have to go through that want to make some comments. So please be respectful of that. And the next item on the agenda, on a much happier note, I think, as mentioned in the last meeting, we have a lot of great economic development projects taking place here in Garrett County. And to give us some more detail on those, I want to introduce our economic development team, led by Steve Kelly, and I'll turn it over to Steve to give some updates.
Well, that, thank you. That was my report, what you just gave. I was going to, I'm going to share that, so thank you all.
All right, next up.
Now, I do appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, as always. I want to take time to thank my commissioners and my boss Kevin Knoll for just allowing me to have this opportunity to fill such an important role here. It truly is humbling to be able to sit each day and look out and think about how to make this county a better place. Thank you, citizens of Garrett County, for putting your confidence most of the time in our, in all of us, to make this county a better place for you and your family. And I definitely want to thank my team. Some of them are here today in community development. I've got Kim Dersch just walked around in the corner, and then Connor Norman is here with us. Bruce Michael is back here in the back. I think you're going to, he does our dredging projects, and then Molly Ramsey does our, she's our watershed coordinator. And I don't see anybody else on the team, but just know this, our team shows up every day and does a wonderful job doing the heavy lifting that makes this place a better for all of us. And Michael Jordan once made a comment, he said, you know, talent will win games. Teamwork will win championships. And I'll just, I'm here to say that our team is winning for Garrett County. So 2024 was a good year for economic development, for community development. People often say, what is economic development? Well, it's more than just do businesses, open it up. It's a whole lot to economic development. It incorporates, we're doing over with Nick and Holly at the Chamber of Commerce, they're seeing small businesses being held up. Of course, Connor Norman, our business development specialist, goes and makes business to see regularly what our small business owners need on a regular basis. Kim works with our industrial parks, trying to make sure that all the regulations and restrictions and covenants are maintained. She also does a lot of our tax credit analysis each year. She does, she manages the Department for Business Development, which also oversees agriculture development. So we've got some partners in the room. So we have a lot just in that little side of our business. Then we've got the permits and inspections on the other side of the hallway. We, in the state of Maryland, I think we're probably the easiest department to work with as far as getting the permits done. Now, I do, from time to time, hear complaints, it's still a lot of regulations to deal with, but try going downstate and doing some of the things that we're getting done here, and you'll see that it's night and day difference from what our friends downstate are doing. Our goal is to make it the easiest county in the state of Maryland to do business, and we work at that every day to try to make it an easier process. Then we've got Sierra over in our land management area. She's working with parks and recreation in the cities, trying to give them support. She's got this master plan to connect all of the communities in Garrett County through a trail system. She's constantly working to get grants for those, doing a wonderful job. So I don't want to leave anybody out. Like I said, Bruce is going to give a little report here, and I don't think Molly's going to give a report today, but just doing a wonderful job for Garrett County. Let's just talk about a few of the projects. I think we've got something going on in every area of the county, and Paul took a lot of the thunder when he talked about housing. We're doing some good things for attainable workforce housing. And I will, I'm going to emphasize one point here, what he said, he didn't, he didn't drive home the point that I think needs to be made. The state of Maryland put in this year, this past two years, I guess, about $2.5 million of grant money towards our housing projects. Now, for that $2.5 million, we're going to see well over 200 housing units just from that investment alone. Now, you take $2.5 million and you put it in the city of Baltimore, you're going to get about 12 to 15 miles of sidewalks. So the money they're putting over here, we have taken and leveraged some county money, some federal monies, some hard work. I see John Bell is here, he's on the Development Court Board. A lot of people on the Development Court Board have given time and effort to making these projects go, and we're seeing a great return on investment for the little bit of money that has been poured into Garrett County. So we're excited about that. Thanks for that update. Paul, I will, I will just go from there and say, the Senator George Edwards Fund has been a godsend for Garrett County. Way over here in the western part of the state, we don't get much. Majority of the state tax dollars are spent in and around the center of Maryland, and even the governor's programs that he's putting out, a lot of the things that he's putting in that for economic development will not help us one bit. Matter of fact, some of the things he's doing are going to hurt us. But the Senator George Edwards Fund has been, it's been a lifesaver for Garrett County, and I implore you, if you, if you know legislators and the governor, if you can say, listen, do what you need to do with the rest of your budget, because I realize we're in trouble, but please let us hang on to this, because it has been a savior for this area. So with that said, the first year we, that I was here, we had projects that we issued. You remember Bitesol did a project, Corsa Cole did a project, Simon Pierce did a project, and those created upwards of 200 jobs just in those projects alone. That was 2023, and those got finished in 2024. Now, in 2024, we have awarded some new projects, and just listen, those got Cherry Hill is doing the 24-bed assisted living facility in the Oakland Mountain Lake Park area of Weber Road. That's going to be a huge need filled in Garrett County. Mountain Laurel Medical Center is doing a project. They just bought the Community Action Agency building up in Grantsville, and they're remodeling that. It's going to include a pharmacy, it's going to have an imaging center, and a few more van rooms and more professional staff, so that's going to fill a big need in the Grantsville area. Sunrise Sanitation, we just, we had just had a resolution voted on that's going to allow them to purchase the four-acre tract, more or less, lot number nine, in our southern Garrett business of Commerce Park. It'd be the last lot available, and they are going to relocate their services up from West Virginia into Garrett County. They are going to create 26 new jobs, net new jobs, in addition to their corporate headquarters that are already here. And we will see expanded services in waste collection and recycling here in Garrett County, so that's going to be a great addition and help from the George Edwards Fund. Quest for Hope is a counseling center that has been operating in Grantsville. It's actually going to move out of where the space where it's renting, and it's going to have a new facility along Benninger, I'm sorry, the Chestnut Ridge Road. So, right, Chestnut Ridge, is the Chestnut Ridge Road right there, there's a church that was built down, and they bought that church, they're going to remodel and do a counseling center. So that's, that's going to be a much-needed addition from the George Fund. Then we've got, the Green Turtle has had a investment made recently. They're going to enclose a lot of their outdoor dining, which is seasonal, so they're going to enclose it to make year-round dining that overlooks the whist. And also, they've put a new golf simulator in their building too, that's going to create new jobs and new capital investments. So those are just some of the projects in '24 from the George Fund. I'll try to move on here, because I know we've got a, we've got a full agenda, but let's talk about the Kaiser's Ridge Business Parks, big things happening at Kaiser's Ridge Business Park. Suncat Properties, it's a, it's a name for a business that's getting ready to go in. They're going, they, we are under an agreement to sell them around 15 acres, and we are under a nondisclosure agreement until they decide to make the announcement, but we have agreed to the commission here to sell the property. And we anticipate 25 full-time jobs in 2025, and probably as many contract 10-9-9 jobs that will go along with that project. So that's exciting news in our Kaiser's Ridge Business Park. We just awarded a bid to put up a shell building in our Kaiser's Ridge Business Park that was given to Daystar Builders, and they will be doing a 50,000-square-foot building right there in the Kaiser's Ridge Business Park. It'll allow us to market that to locals that want to grow, or people from out of the area that would like to relocate. It's just going to be a great new addition to the park there. We have an access road that we're putting in the Kaiser's Ridge Business Park that's going to open up accessibility to several lots there in the park, so we're excited to see that hopefully get done here in 2025. We ran into some snags in '24 with some of the engineering and some of the state regulations, but hopefully we were past that now, and we'll see that done in '25. And finally, in the Kaiser's Ridge Business Park, we are doing a centralized propane solution there. We don't have natural gas heat in that area of the county, so what we're doing is, we're putting in two 30,000-gallon propane tanks in the park, and we're running the infrastructure to the various lots, so that it'll be metered propane to every tenant that it will set up in our park there. So that's going to be a huge infrastructure need that we're taking care of. Next, we're going to move on to the Southern Garrett Business and Technological Park, Technology Park. I just mentioned Sunrise Sanitation was a specific of the George Fund. Well, they are, they're going to be building a brand-new building, like I said, 26 new employees, they're going to be, you know, bringing all their operations up here from West Virginia. So that's, that's a win. Anytime we can, we can bring a business across state lines, that's a win for Maryland, it's definitely a win for Garrett County. So we're excited to have them come in and grow with us. The McHenry Business Park, we've got pretty exciting news here, too. We just entered into a resolution to allow Canabarians to take over the Bedco Building. And Canabarians is in the cannabis industry, they do a lot of food attitudes, they do a lot of- They do a lot of food additives, they do a lot of uh cannabinoids where they process the, the important parts out of the cannabis for, for retail. And it's just playing into Maryland, the state of Maryland's recent uh transition uh to open up that market. But they uh, you know, we're seeing big growth next door in Allegheny County, now we're, we're seeing it come here. So that will uh probably create forty to sixty full-time jobs uh in the coming year. Hannah Combs is a local builder, he's semi-local, and he's got a place here in Garrett County, but he's uh under contract to purchase a, a tract land in the McHenry Business Park. He's going to be putting in an office and growing his staff here, here at county. So neat stuff there in the McHenry Business Park. Uh adjacent to that is the airport. You all met Addison Wire, our new manager. Uh he's, he's coming in uh with fresh perspective on airport related to start growing. We've got some things that we're working on right away. We have a biplane tours operation that's uh, that's going to be opening up this spring. And basically what that's going to be is one of our local pilots, another, they're getting semi-local, he's a, he lives in Virginia, and he has a home in Garrett County. He's going to be making the move to Garrett County full-time and offering these tours for, for visitors or locals, whoever would like to, to go and see Garrett County over the lake and over the whist, over the mountains from a, from a airplane view. He'll be doing those tours this, this year. We've got new hangar instruction going in, we've got eight new hangars that are, that are set to go in the West Apen. So we've already got interest in a couple of people building hangars, uh it'd be more revenue for the county, more uh, more tax base for the county, so we're excited about that. And finally, at the, at the airport, we are working with the MAA, Maryland Aviation Association, and the FAA, the Federal Aviation Association, to put in an, an access road from the airport to the business park. Hopefully that will uh, you know, maybe be a five-year project to get that done, but that will, that will make our business park much more attractive for any industry that would like to, to be able to tap into the value of having the airport right there. So moving on, we'll talk just a little bit about our solar operations. If you all don't already know, we are leading the way in Maryland for, for solar right now. We uh, we have underway two of the largest, the largest uh solar operations that will be in the state of Maryland. One's a nine-hundred acre uh project called Solar Backbone. The next one is going to be over a thousand acres, that's down in the Bloomington area, that's going to uh be the Jade Meadow operation. And then we are inundated daily, weekly with community solar projects in our planning and harvesting. So uh we, we're leading the way there and anticipate that uh we're going to lead the way in a lot of areas here in, in Maryland.
Now, Steve, let, if I can interject, I think it's very important to, to comment, especially because of the controversy on solar uh throughout the state, that the two large solar projects in Garrett County, which will be, I think, the two largest in the state, uh are both on reclaimed strip mined land that cannot be used for any other purpose. So this isn't us pulling farmland out of circulation to facilitate solar, this is land that couldn't be used for anything else. Uh that's also, for the most part, outside of any use yet. So I, I think that's important.
We do have also too, when, when, when companies approach you about using your, your agricultural land, just make sure you do your due diligence and, and understand the contracts. Make sure that you have a friend, that you have legal friends that can, can review those contracts. Uh we have heard stories of people that have been taken advantage of by companies, and they're not receiving what they were sold. So just be careful, our Garrett County residents, we don't want you to fall into that category. So in summary.
Chips.
Did I miss chips? Okay, I'm sorry, that, that's over on the Francis Sanders Boulevard. We have a two acre lot over on Francis Sanders behind eighty-four lumber. Uh chips networking down here on, they're on two nineteen, they mapped around their space. They're taking on new contracts in West Virginia, so they're going to be building a new uh, a new operation, new building, an operation there, hiring new staff, and hopefully see some good job growth out of that. Now, that's related to our mayor, it's actually his son, so I keep leaving, I forgot that. So.
I saw him taking notes.
You told me, so anyway, that's a, that's a lot, and I'm sorry to take up so much time, but in summary, I, I'll just say that, you know, we're holding our own quite well here in, in, when the rest of Maryland is, is struggling economically. Uh we don't have the best statistics in the state of Maryland for being business friendly. But, you know, like, like it says in, in the Bible, a city on a hill cannot be hid. Over here in Garrett County, we're up on the hill, we can't be hid. We're ma, we're making good things happen here in Maryland, and we're leading the way from out here in the west.
Thanks, Steve. So as, as we mentioned at the last meeting, when we did a lot of the sales in the uh, for the property, uh twenty twenty-five is going to be a very good year. I, I think from an economic development standpoint, probably be the biggest year we've had since the, the quote-unquote glory days of the early two thousands. Uh and, and again, the, the takeaway is uh multiple industries, not all, not all eggs in one basket. Uh several businesses, both uh recruitment coming in new to the county plus expansion. Uh it, it's really, and, and through a variety of industries. So if one industry crashes, we're diverse enough, even with these new industries that are coming in, that we should be uh a little bit insulated from uh one industry going down or one business going down. So uh I, I think there's just a, a lot of, a lot of synergy right now and a lot of optimism for Garrett County. So thank, thanks, Steve, and the Economic Development Team. Uh next up is uh Bruce Michaels, and Bruce is going to tell us about the Arrowhead dredging project that we did and where we are with that. Bruce?
Absolutely, thank you very much. I appreciate the commissioner's giving me an opportunity, basically, uh to let you all know and everybody in the audience about the Deep Creek Lake Arrowhead Cove dredging project. And again, this project uh has been in the works back in December of two thousand and thirteen. Uh Maryland Department of Natural Resources did a, what was called the Deep Creek Lake Sediment Study. And it identified ten sediment-impacted coves within uh Deep Creek Lake. And from then, there was a lot of attention, um a lot of work to identify what the best ways to potentially address that uh accumulated sediment, um and identify a priority for which cove um would be um done. And it was decided um through an um, an alternatives analysis and uh a basically a prioritization study um that was done by Maryland Environmental Service, uh contracted out uh back in two thousand and, you know, seventeen, eighteen uh time period, um that if funding could be identified to potentially do a pilot dredging project, that um that would be done. And thanks to the efforts of Senator Edwards and Delegate Biceau back in two thousand and twenty-one, they got Maryland State um Government basically to fund the entirety of this project. So let's see if this uh works. I'm going to give a quick presentation, and I'm going to talk about the project purpose. I'm going to give some pictures and slides um about the project itself for those that weren't here during the winter. Uh this was done last winter, um basically beginning uh November and December of two thousand and twenty-three and carried over into uh two thousand and twenty-four. I'm going to talk about um the process, I'm going to talk about the site restoration, and then finally, we actually produced a lessons learned report that was released in September. The project uh purpose was to determine if dredging can be an effective tool for removing accumulated sediment in Deep Creek Lake shallow coves. Those are the areas that um were identified as being sediment-impacted. Most of those ten coves were in the southern region of the uh, of Deep Creek Lake. Arrowhead, as I said, there was a study done, we did a prioritization study on which ones, which coves would be the most feasible and economically um available to dredge. And Arrowhead Cove was selected as the highest um priority. And this uh map, basically, to see if my pointer shows up. Uh it doesn't really show up on my slides, does it? No. Well, anyway, you can see um the portion of Arrowhead Cove that was to be dredged, and then that lower little box um was identified as a staging area um to bring in all the equipment and to actually manage the sediment once it's excavated uh from the cove. Okay, sediment accumulation in Deep Creek Lake, there has been no sediment um removal activity since the inception of the lake. I think everybody knows that Deep Creek Lake is a hundred years old now. So this is the first uh dredging, dredging project in Deep Creek Lake. Um those studies back in two thousand and thirteen, conducted by a contractor to DNR, indicated that um the accumulation of over one million cubic yards of sediment, representing basically point six of the lake's volume, has accumulated in the bottom of the lake since its inception in nineteen twenty-five. Okay? The majority of that accumulation has occurred, again, in those lake's southern coves, and the accumulation does not impact the function of the lake or the energy generation uh by Brookfield. Talk a little bit about the staging area. Um an area had to be identified, and again, adjacent to where the actual dredging is being done. And there was a field owned by Delegati, we had to get an, an agreement with him to use that field um as that staging area to lay down materials, to bring in everything that would need to be uh built, the temporary um roads, the um that would be um laid out over the uh, uh the lake bottom um when we were, after it was de-watered. And we were able to get that agreement and get the um, um preparation done. And that happened in October uh of twenty twenty-three. You can see some of the equipment moving in there to do that. This is some of the equipment that they brought in to do it. Um they had to divert the water. Arrowhead Cove is fed by Arrowhead Run, the stream upstream of that. And they had to bring in those, those orange boxes are huge pumps, actually four large pumps to pump the water through those uh large cylinders. Big trucks brought um, you know, I don't know how many cylinders itself, you know, forty, fifty of those cylinders, cylinders uh onto the site. They, the machine there, it looks a little bit uh aqua blue, actually pushed those pipes together and seals them. And that's how the water was diverted from Arrowhead Run around the cove to the other side of what's called a coffer dam um to keep the water away from the lake. Okay? And now I'm going to give an update on the lake access, the de-watering. What they did was, this was dredging, this operation took place in the dry, and it's mechanical excavation of removing the material. So we had to get all the water out of Arrowhead Cove. And the way they did that was they put in um coffer dams to block off the water, and then diverted the stream around it through those large pipes that were in some of those other ones. This is a drone um picture of Arrowhead Cove before they started the dredging. Um we worked with Brookfield to lower the lake levels to the middle of the uh rule band, there's an upper rule band and a lower rule band, that Brookfield Hydroelectric has to manage the water levels at Deep Creek Lake throughout the year. Um we were not asking, and there, this is a permit requirement um of, of Brookfield to run the hydroelectric facility to generate twenty megawatts of power. Um and that was a huge effort um that took the state, Brookfield, the governor's office to get them to work with us to help lower the uh lake levels down to the middle of the rule band, not to the lower end of the rule band, but to the middle of the rule band. Um the rule band is twenty-four fifty-five feet, the lower end uh during that time of year, in November, the upper rule band was twenty-four fifty-eight. We asked them to lower it to the middle of twenty-four fifty-six feet. And this is a picture of the uh cove, and you can see how much of that sediment has been accumulating in that cove before we actually dredged it. These are those temporary roads that were built um along um the shoreline to get that heavy equipment in, the excavators. Um and on the left-hand side of that um picture, you can see that pipe, that's where the water was diverted from Arrowhead Run around the whole cove to the other side of these uh coffer dams um to keep the water blocked out. Those water retention structures, we had to build a small dam for a little creek that was flowing into uh Arrowhead Cove. And then um a coffer dam was placed at the head of the creek, and then one out in the cove itself. And those structures are actually water-filled bladder uh systems. And once those were installed, we were able to pump all the water out of that cove and then actually start the dredging. The picture on the left here is the uh coffer dam um that was filled over at our um, at the head of the creek coming in. The creek was blocked out from flowing into the cove. Those pipes there then pumped that water into a larger pipe with those big, huge orange pumps that we had, uh that you saw in another one. And they went all along the shoreline to the other side. The picture on the right is the main coffer dam that went across the, the area of the cove um out towards um Silver Tree Restaurant. It's basically a huge plastic bladder, it's wrapped up on a huge pole, and basically, it's filled with water to get it to the full size. This is a picture, November twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, of installing the coffer dam. Um they got it on one side and basically just started filling it up with water and rolled it out all the way across um the um, the cove there. Once it's filled with water, it sinks to the bottom and uh keeps the water separate, the lake separated from that, that cove. Based on that, you could actually walk on that coffer dam, and you can see uh on the picture on the right, uh two people that are out, actually on that, it's so sturdy that you can actually walk on it. This is a picture of the one on the left is the, the stream water from Arrowhead Run being diverted around the coffer dam um at the um, in the cove itself. That yellow line is actually a trepidity curtain. You can see the water rushing in on the other side of the coffer dam and it back into the lake, and then the uh trepidity curtain there to keep any sediment from getting into the lake from the, from the stream. The first load of sediment was removed on Friday, December first, two thousand and twenty-three. We had uh multiple excavators that were collecting the um, the sediment going out there, once the cove was relatively dry, scooping it up, putting it, loading it onto dump trucks. The dump trucks would then take it to the um staging area, dump it out, and let it dry and de-water, which did not actually take very long. The sediment was actually pretty dry once we got all the water out of it. These are pictures of um the actual excavation. You can see the coffer dam in the background, the material behind it is relatively um dry compared to the lake. And those deposits of waters, they would have pumps in there to pump it to the other side uh when any uh water filled up in there. Okay? This is the material that was taken to the staging area to de-water. It was let in there, and usually within a day, it would de-water enough that the um excavators could load that material onto a dump truck, and then the dump truck would take the material to the landfill. And it's clean material, and it was used as clean cover material at the landfill. So they didn't have to pay to um, um store that or, or get rid of the material, it was all free. Picture a couple of the excavators working out in the center of the lake, and you can see the large cuts. They cut anywhere from one foot to five feet down and remove the sediment. And obviously, the deeper sediment was in the center of the cove. To get the project done as quickly as possible, they worked um till probably um three o'clock in the morning. We did give them permission to work during the night to expedite the process. So they were working from seven AM till like three AM the next uh morning, um the excavators. Uh instead of just like an eight-hour day, they tried to get them, and, and those were just the excavators. We weren't moving material um away from the site, dump trucks on the roads or anything during the night, um but just pulling material out of the um cove. And during the winter, there was no uh complaint. winter, there was no complaints of noise or anything or, or lights. This is at the end of the project in January where they were actually removing the coffer dam. And you can see this time of the year, we're getting, you know, freezing conditions where we have ice, very difficult to work in the wintertime during these conditions. So that's one of the constraints that we had. And it's not the best time of the year to be doing this type of work. Okay? Finally, once the project was done, we had to do site restoration, put the area back to the way it was before. And our site restoration included installation of in-water habitat for fish. And that was putting rock structures, freed separate rock structures for fish habitat. And then since we cleaned that material out of sediment, we had to go back in and replant, submerge aquatic vegetation, the grasses to help establish it and to keep invasive species from growing in there. Okay, that field that we were using, we basically replanted it with seed as part of the project. The county and our contractors were required to plant 20 trees in there and also 16 shrubs along the bank. We didn't have trees there before, but DNR wanted us to replant trees and we said we would. And so those trees were planted during the, you know, early part of the summer. Unfortunately, during the drought conditions, about six of those, seven of those trees basically perished, didn't make it. The contractor is coming back out and they did replace those trees. And we're going to make sure that they are, they survive next year as well. Okay, we hired Department of Natural Resources to come in and plant native species. They collected the seeds the summer before of native grasses that were native to Deep Creek Lake. They were able to take those, those seeds back over the winter, send them to a greenhouse, propagated fresh and, and new plants. And again, these are native from Deep Creek Lake. They planted over 1,000 plants in there in multiple areas. They planted 20 different plots of grasses. And out of those 20 plots, 18 of them basically survived. So that was very successful. And this was one of the first times they did a project of this scale, especially out here in freshwater. Okay? Finally, we did a lessons learned report out of this whole project. And so what did we learn about doing this? We were, we successfully removed over 11,000 cubic yards of accumulated sediment. Unfortunately, we originally wanted 15,000 cubic yards, but when the funding was first identified back in 2021 by the state, they gave us, we had a certain amount of funding to deal with and we just didn't have that much money. So they cut back on the amount of material that we did. So instead of 15,000 cubic yards, we went to 11,000 cubic yards. We learned that mechanical dredging in the dry during the fall and winter demonstrated to be an effective tool for removing a large amount of sediment, but at a significant cost and uncertainty due to the weather. I said earlier, that pro, project cost about $2.5 million and again, it was entirely funded by the state. The project improved the boating and swimming access. Even this year, when we had drought conditions and the water levels were down, there was still plenty of water in Arrowhead Cove for boating and fishing. The SAV and the upland restoration appears to be successful. And we're still waiting to look at the impacts on fishing. Okay? The main issues of concern for mechanical dredging in the dry or the weather, the time of year restrictions associated with that, we can only do it in the late fall and wintertime. And basically the high cost associated with that to get that heavy equipment in there, extremely expensive, working in the wintertime. We were extremely fortunate to get that project done as early as we did. And that's only because they basically worked through the night. If the weather had turned colder sooner, it would have certainly cut back on the amount of material that we could remove. Other things that we consider is potential hydraulic dredging, which is when you dredge when the water is full, you put barges out there. And the only time that you can basically do that is like in the summertime. So that is going to impact for those particular coves that you're, if you wouldn't want to dredge, it would impact your summer recreational activities. So it could potentially impact, you know, rental fees or whatever. If you rent your place out, that happens to be the month that they would be out, out there. So those are things that would potentially that you could look at. Hydraulic dredging is a little bit cheaper than mechanical dredging in the dry, but you could potentially do multiple coves. Also, you have to identify the funding before you even start this process on where and who's going to pay for the funding. The state paid for the Arrowhead Cove as a pilot project, they're probably not going to pay for another dredging project. So whether you get federal grants, you know, you have state grants or whatever, you know, private entities to pay for it or whatever. And again, dredging isn't very expensive. The final report is actually on our website, the Garrett County website. And all you have to do is Google, you know, Arrowhead Cove and that would give you the information. And with that, that's basically all I have. If you have any questions, that's the information where the report is and information. So, okay?
Thank you, Bruce. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Just a quick announcement. The next public meeting will be Tuesday, February the 18th here, beginning at four o'clock. Before we go to public comment and questions, I, I should have done this earlier and forgive me, but I, I don't know. We, we went over a lot of stuff there earlier. I don't know Commissioner Savage, Commissioner Titchell, if anything you want to add to any of that or, or not.
You know, I was wondering if he's going to let us talk or not tonight. Once he, once he gets on a roll, it's hard to do. But Paul does a great job and that's why Ryan and I prefer him to do those type of things. But I will say that everything Paul has said, I am in total 100% agreement with. So if you have any questions about that, I totally agree with everything he said.
If you have any questions, just ask Paul.
I do want to thank everyone who calls and emails or shows up to a public meeting to ask questions regardless of the, the topic, to make sure that you're getting accurate information straight from the horse's mouth. So we do appreciate the dialogue and the conversation and the emails and the phone calls, whether it's paper gaming or transmission lines or transfer tax or whatever the case may be, and encourage you to continue to engage with us directly, no matter what the topic may be. So with that, we'll go to question and comment. When you're called on, please state your name because I know not everybody in here probably knows everybody. So state your name for the record and then go ahead into your questions and or comments. Does anybody have any questionable comments? Lynn?
Yeah, Lynn Chen Dell. We had a constructive discussion at the last meeting on the transfer tax. I really think we look at the tape of that meeting, there was never an insinuation that we're not doing anything. And I, I, I'm heartened by hearing about the progress on housing and the progress on economic development. At the last meeting, some questions were raised and a few of us went back and tried to answer those questions with a little bit of research and some proposals. We found that in 2024, there were 72 homes sold for $1 million or more, totaling $120 million. And there were 52 homes sold in the range of $175,000 to $250,000 to show the problem. Chairman Edwards at the last meeting said he thought it would be a popular proposal, but there needed to be meat on the bones. And we went, we discussed this and we thought that funds from a transfer tax increase for those high-dollar houses could supplement the first-time homebuyers program, could supplement Garrett Transit, could subsidize a study of the daycare needs in the county in conjunction with Garrett Regional Medical Center and the Board of Education, with the rest of the funds going to Garrett Community Action for building, acquiring or rehabbing houses for residents whose incomes are above the Section 8 level. So we, we also drew up a draft bill and we submitted it to Delegate Heinbaum and Senator McKay and a copy to the commission and then got an email that we're too late, despite the fact that we started this process in November, that it's too late to introduce a bill. So what do we do now? I think there's some mixed messaging in terms of the budget. At the meeting last week, Administrator Nell said that we look pretty good for two years. At the same time, Delegate Heinbaum, Senator McKay say that they're extremely concerned about what the presidential administration is going to do, moving agencies out of Maryland, cutting federal jobs, even if the budget, the budget will be balanced this year. What does that mean for next year? We know that there's volatility. Chris Mullott was here talking about how he almost had to lay off a people last year through an impulsive move by the administration. So what do we do? Are revenues not in, not in interest here, increasing revenues despite the fact that right now we're doing well? What we would suggest, and this is our ask of the commission, on a few days' notice last week, you had almost 100 people at Garrett College at 6:00 for a hearing, a meeting on taxes. We have the same ability to discuss the revenue question and the tax question in a public setting at Garrett College at 6:00, which is a more convenient time. And why don't we do that? And maybe before the deadline next year, we can have a piece of legislation that addresses some of the needs of the county, the county's working population. I think we have great talent here. We have people who were directly affected by the housing shortage, the available, the affordable housing shortage. We have nonprofits and businesses with great talent. Why don't we have a town hall meeting on the problems facing working families in the county and put on that flyer that we're going to be discussing a proposal to raise the transfer tax and raise the accommodations tax. And I guarantee you will bring people out. We have people from the Realtors here tonight. Let's have that discussion. Let's not be afraid of controversy. And let's do what we can to prepare for, not just to prepare for hard times, but to address some pressing problems and maybe some, you know, do some new things for some problems that we could address like childcare. Is there a reason that we couldn't have a partnership between the county and community action and the hospital, for instance, to have a childcare center to stabilize some employment so that, I'm an old guy, when I go to the hospital, I don't have to have a doctor or a nurse worried about what's happening with their kids during the day. Do we have the, do we have that potential? We have creativity. We're proposing a public meeting to do that. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Marsh Smith from the Fensel area. I'm involved in the fire service. But why I'm here is about the governor's recent increase in the tax assessment. My taxes are going to go up 27%. I recently retired. I look at my retirement income, it is just about what minimum wage would be. My taxes go up 27%. My taxes would go up approximately $500. There's a large portion of people in this county are probably the lowest income people in the whole state. What is our commissioners doing in a way of communicating to the state of our situation here in Garrett County? Some of these increases are higher in Garrett County than they are anyplace else in the state. I'll guarantee you they're higher than Baltimore cities. A lot of them probably are not seeing anything. I have a group of people that are interested in obtaining a petition to the governor's office saying that we will not honor that recent tax assessment. And if that goes through and it continues, what's the county going to do to help out the lower-income senior citizens, the lower-income young people who can't afford to live in this county? What are you going to do? Are you going to lower tax rate? Our tax rate is the highest in the state. Are you going to lower tax rate?
The tax rate is not the highest in the state.
One of them is the third highest.
Tied with several others, yes.
Lowest, lowest income for lower-income people.
One of them.
Yes, very. What are you going to do? Are you going to oppose it to the governor's office? Are you going to speak about it to the governor's office, our delegates, our senators? What's the deal?
We have those conversations frequently. Have you applied for the homestead tax credit?
No, I have not applied.
We talked at length about that last year. That'll flatten your tax increase based on the, that'll flatten the increase in your tax based on the assessment. Taxes aren't going up, but the assessment goes up, which means the payment goes up. We understand that. We'll address some of that during the budget proceeding, but I would, Kevin, can you get Mr. Smith's contact information?
Sure.
We'll get, we'll get information to you directly about the homestead tax credit that will lessen the increase that you'll see.
I think you need to publicize that so we're not just me.
Well, we, we did, we did a lot of that last year. We did lots of publication about that last year. Paper covered a lot of that last year.
It's on the tax bills, information on tax bills also.
So we'll, we'll get that directly to you, but that's out there and that's one way to help. But you raise a great point. I mean, there's, there's no way, you know, that, that's
Everything that you're doing here does not benefit the lower-income people of our county. It impacts the rich. The dredging of the lake impacts the rich and the businesses. It doesn't help the lower-income people of this county, especially the families and people who live away from the lake. It doesn't help at all. And we're paying higher tax rates.
It, the, the lake is a double-edged sword in that regard. However, I would argue that if you took Deep Creek Lake out of Garrett County, the poor people in the county would be a lot less worse off than they are now because of the taxes that are brought in by the lake that do pay for the roads and do pay for schools and do pay for the police department that otherwise we would not have.
The only thing you got to do is worry about paying for the fire service because right now, where we are now, you're going to be paying fire service in this county in the next four to five years.
We talk about that quite.
We're really close. We're getting out at night with two or three people in the neighborhood, you know? And if you ask for paying fire service, what do you tell you? You won't be able to afford it.
Absolutely. I don't, I don't disagree with that.
You need to do something to take care of your people who are in the fire service to keep them there. I've talked to Mr. Mullott about that. That's something you need to look at because you're not losing. We're losing people every day now. But you, the lower-income people in the Fensel area, I know, is very low income. You look at the incomes of our people, they're very low, probably lower than most of the county.
Interestingly enough, the Route 40 school district is one of the more affluent of all of our school districts in the county.
I don't know about that.
I do. But I, I do appreciate your comments, Marsh, and your welcome.
My last comment would be, we had a big meeting last week over paper gaming and stuff, but we didn't see one commissioner there. Lots of people were unhappy because we didn't have the commissioner present. You know, you didn't think it was important enough to attend?
I would say that's not an accurate statement. I couldn't attend.
Somebody can attend.
I won't speak for either one of my partners, but I had a family commitment that I had to take care of. It was not published as a public hearing.
You very well know you could have the county ministry there.
Well, yeah, because he wanted to address the, the misinformation that was out there about the tax, which was never, was never proposed. And there was a lot of confusion about that. So the thought was that there would be an informational meeting, which is exactly what it was publicized as, to try to dispel some of that, which I think it did. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Marsh, but all of the people that were there were opposed to the nonprofits paying anything. And that's exactly the message that was conveyed.
That's correct.
So, you know, we knew what, we knew as a commission, we knew exactly what the people wanted, and that's exactly what they got. wanted, and that's exactly what they got.
But they don't have a hundred percent assurance of commission changes. That's where the bill that I suggested to Mr. Knell for, what kind of play.
And we are, and I agree a hundred percent. And I did speak, we spoke with Senator McKay in December about this. We also spoke with Delegate Heimbahn. We sent them a letter in November, I think.
You still have 10 days to get it in if you want to do it this year.
They may disagree with that. But we are going to pursue that next year. And like I said, it's easier said than done because that law is specific to three counties and not one. It may not be as easy as we would like it to be, but we will, we will put that forward. But your point is taken. Yes, sir.
Hi, Jerry Polius. The, this business with the line is going through Garrett County. If I'm, if I'm understanding everything right, Jenny wants more data centers. They're big power users, but they do, so a lot of people would pay jobs. We'll, we have access to that power since it's coming through. And if so, the possibility of having a, something like a data center here would take care of so many of these little problems we seem to have, housing, no place for the kids to go to work. I mean, there's a lot of cures involved, and if you're going to bring electricity through the yard, can we put up a fence?
I'll be careful while I answer that because again, we don't have a lot of information. My, the way I understand it, that power will not directly impact Maryland, and there will not be an exchange straight from the power line in Maryland. I think the power company would make an argument that it's beefing up the grid, so ultimately we may benefit from it for more power being in the regional grid. But as far as pulling power right off that line in Maryland, I do not believe that. From what little information we have at this point in time, I do not think that is part of the process. It's a great question.
But could, if, if this is a bill that's being put in, as part of that bill, maybe you can request somehow to get an addition in the bill or some clause in the bill that you can now or in the future have access to some of that power. If they're going to try to get the right to just go where they want, okay. Well, part of the price they should have to pay, either pay a fee to go through our property or through the land, or give access, which would be better because that could really bring in some companies that we can't reach now.
Yeah, I think, again, not to confuse the two pieces of this, the bill in question right now is specific to land use on state property. Then there'll be an actual permitting process that's separate from that, that may or may not address some of those things. I will bring that up with Delegate Heimbahn and Senator McKay to see if that's even a possibility. It's not a bad idea. And, and there will be some revenue from that. The power lines pay utility tax. We don't know exactly what that looks like quite yet because we don't know what the footprint's going to be, but they, they will have to pay that. And if they would do, if they would be granted eminent domain, again, we're opposed to that, they would have to pay fair market value, but try to eliminate that.
To bring in that type of job they're talking about. I mean, you've got kids leaving, nobody knows why. Well, maybe they can get a job that they're going to go to the city. I mean, there's so many tentacles that we have in this. It's just, to leave them unaddressed would be a real error.
Thanks. Steve?
Yeah, Steve, sorry. I know a lot of people talk about the catchor tax, but since you're talking about the potential power line, a couple of things just to maybe add some information. I think what I want to share really is there's so little information out here. First off, this was decided in 2022 that there would be a power line through Garrett County. It was part of the Mid-Atlantic Resiliency Link. So it's been out there quite a while, and the fact we've had no public meetings, no public information is, is almost criminal. I think it undermines all of, you know, of democracy, really. The second is, this is not just about public lands. This is on wildlands specifically, and the bill rewrites the Wildland Protection Act. That is only 2% of the public lands in the state of Maryland. And it specifically rewrites it to allow construction of new rideways that are currently not allowed under that. So we'd actually change the legislation. I've been fortunate enough over the last three years, actually being a partner and managing all protected areas, the entire Chesapeake region, third of Garrett County's in Chesapeake region. All the areas in this bill are in that region. There is a, an offset of the requirements for water quality tied up in those public lands. So this could change that. There could be penalties to the state, to, to the region for that. You know, once, once power line route is established, your property values will go down. Once people know where that's going to be, nobody's going to want to live there. If there is a, an off-ramp for a data center, that could be good, but it will also, the largest change in land use in the state of Virginia, part of my work, I know this, there's been a tremendous conversion of farmland and forests to solar projects. 900 acres, I appreciate Steve's comments, 900 acres is, is equivalent to a, to a data center. These data centers are putting in 10,000 acres of solar farm. And I would presume that putting a power line here with an off-ramp would target Garrett County farms and forests for that type of work. So I would encourage you, you know, a lot, there's a lot of information that needs to be out there. I know that you've not taken a position on this, but I would encourage you to ask the senator to remove this bill until there's more public information about this because we just don't, we have not had an opportunity to learn about this. It's going to affect, you know, and you know, I've come here many times to talk about the Yacht Quarter. If you're going east or west, you're going to have to cross the Yacht Quarter. Since you have not established a, a position on this, I would hope that you would convene, as I always ask the Yacht Committee Advisory Board, to talk with you to help shape a position on this because that's exactly the type of thing an advisory board is set up to do. So, you know, I, there's not much time, but the hearing on this is February 21st, which is just over two weeks. And, you know, I, I really hope that DNR is doing their job. I, I get disillusioned a little bit about them doing that, but I hope that collectively we can have a more thoughtful conversation about this project.
Thanks. Seamus?
I wanted to address a couple of things on Seamus Welsh. I wanted to talk about the transmission lines, but I wanted to go back a little bit to the housing thing. You know, I did, I, last meeting, I didn't intonate. I said that we needed a plan, and, and I, I think we have a different understanding about what that meant. And I'm sorry if it was repetitive. What I meant by that is that, I understand you have really some push forward progress. This is not, not to take away from anything that is moving forward. What I was hoping for was what all plans has, an opportunity to, for input and discussion and for other brains to have some input to them and then to possibly bring other resources to them. I think what we're trying to offer is resource to the project, not to take away from anything about what the county is doing. And I, I would be so excited if we figure out a way to open that up a little bit. So that's just a thing. On the, on, on what we're talking about with the transmission lines, I, I, when, we went to the Chamber of Commerce meeting a couple of months ago, and Senator McKay said he would not take any steps that affected Garrett County without your approval. And he's gone ahead and dropped a bill, not only without your approval, without any information going to the citizens. That's criminal.
Did he ask your mother?
No. And so as far as I'm concerned, you know, there needs to be some sort of a public outrage that, that hits his face on this, but to the extent that you all have some influence in that, since he says he doesn't move without you, move him. I mean, I, you know, this is, it's a little bit ridiculous. I'm not sure I know enough to be fully against it, but from what you said, to have him, to take this step is a step closer to allowing them to be permitted for what they want to do, which is having him in his domain through our county. And, and I think that, you know, there's a lot of people with a lot to lose if that happens. And, and if they're, if he says they won't move without you, then please let them know he's moving without you.
I will say that, and I, I appreciate the comment, Seamus. I will say this, I did speak with the senator today to answer your question. He did not inform us that he was going to drop the bill. We didn't know about it until pretty much everyone else did. But he did say today when I spoke with him that, you know, anyone that wanted to talk to him about it should reach out to him. I did talk to him today at length about it, and he gave me his reasoning for doing what he did, and we'll just leave it at that. And, but I, I do, you know, you're his constituents as are we, so anyone that feels strongly about this, he, he readily invited anyone to reach out that wanted to, so I would say go ahead and take advantage of that.
We'll get a power line, we've got one, we've got everything else because they want it. They want to be our playground. They want it to be Garrett County, to be their playground. So we give up, we're not hurt.
Lynn?
I want to have a talk on a public meeting on the transfer tax. Can we make that happen?
Can we ask all three members?
I would just say this, you know, I get what you're asking for, and I'm not opposed to it, and I'll meet with you guys anytime. I've met with you guys on it myself. I'll meet with you anytime. This is a public meeting right here. We have.
It's not big enough.
We, well, we, we have our budget meeting at the college where that is the appropriate place to have that conversation. There would be a time to do it. Again, I'll go back, and Mike, you brought this up in the back room, and I'll reiterate what I, we cannot have a, if direct democracy worked, the Greeks would still be in charge of the world. They did away with it for a reason. We're not going to have a public meeting on every single event and, and activity that comes up. We have these meetings. We let you guys ask your questions. We let you talk. We take your advice. I, I specifically tried to address every issue directly today because there were specific questions that were asked. I won't speak for my partners, but I, I think, I would argue that there's plenty of opportunity to have conversation. This is, you know, the last couple of weeks, these meetings have been fuller than normal. We had the budget hearing last year, no one came. So, you know, am I opposed to it? No, I'm not. I, I'll have those conversations. Are we going to have a meeting just on the transfer tax? I mean, we've made our statement today, we're not going to do it now. Does that mean we'll never do it? No. But the, the budget requests and the budget will dictate whether or not tax, any tax, whether it's transfer tax or income tax or whatever would need to be raised or not. We're not there yet. So I, I don't know right this minute if, if the, if the question is, should we raise the transfer tax just to raise more money? I don't know that that's, that's it. And, you know, we don't know what community action needs because they haven't given us their request yet. So I, I think, you know, if you just want to have a meeting to throw around ideas, I'm, I'm not so sure that's the way to do it outside of the budget process. Mike?
But since you invoked my name, can I respond without using my chance to say something? Although I'm pretending what I wanted to say.
You always get it talking, Mike.
I would like the petition for an age exclusion on that rule. But you're right, I brought up in the back room, which is also a public meeting.
Yep.
Where you're dealing with business and you've made some policy decisions there. I don't know why it's not part of this meeting. But I, I brought up the issue of the Open Meetings Act. The purpose of the Open Meetings Act in Maryland says, right on the folder that goes out to everybody, is to provide the public, your constituents, with an opportunity to witness the policymaking process, deliberation, formulation of policies, and voting. And in the public meeting last week, or last meeting, I said, I don't think these meetings that you hold here address that because you came out and said, well, here's some policy decisions we've made. What was the policymaking process? For example, last week, last meeting, you said that there was a philosophical issue about how commissioners are elected, and I think that's right. And you said you'd be willing to talk about it. That should be a public meeting. We've heard issues, a request from this group to have a, a, a public meeting, not on the transfer tax, but on affordable housing. I don't know what attainable housing is, but we're talking, the, the report that this, that the, that the Department of, your economic development did, talked about affordable housing for workforce. They've asked for a public meeting. The DI people, when they presented their report, you didn't even talk about their recommendations, asked for a public meeting to get broader input. And we now have this other thing that's going on about the, these high wire things with no public input. It could affect my land. I don't know. So I, I, the, the meeting that was held last week, just like this gentleman said, everybody there thought you guys were going to be there because they wanted to talk to you. You're the policymakers. They wanted to participate in that policy process. Mr. Knell did a very good job representing you guys. He was firm. They also had a sense of humor, which is, was, was interesting to learn. So this is not, this is not a meeting, in my view, that satisfies your requirements for open meeting law where you have to interact, have to provide the opportunities for people to see your decision-making process. What was the decision-making process that you went to when you came out and announced, we're not going to have any public hearing and we're not going to ask for anything on the transfer tax? There was no public discussion that I know of. But anyway, that's, that's my point. You, you referenced me. I did say, and I agree wholeheartedly, that the Open Meeting Act doesn't provide opportunity for people to participate in the nitty gritty details that we've been talking about in some of these cases. It's a policy. It's providing the opportunity for your constituents to witness the policymaking process. And, and the way that the commission meetings are structured, even the one here and one in Vegas, where policy making back in the back room, why isn't that meeting out here? So I agree that it doesn't, and in fact, it doesn't require you to have this public discussion.
Correct.
And you guys answer all the questions anybody wants to have. But that doesn't, in my view, help you satisfy your requirements, your obligations under the Open Meetings Act to share to the public your decision-making process of where each person comes from. How does, how does Mr. Savage feel about public hearings on this, on that, on this gentleman's tax issue? You're going to have big tax issues coming up. I mean, what's going on at the federal government is not over. Elon Musk has taken over the checkbook in the Treasury Department, and a top official in the Treasury Department had to leave. Now, why is he doing that? Because they're going to circumvent the Congress when they cut back things so that the, um, community action's still going to be hit. What are you guys going to do about that? Are you going to need money? I mean, that proclamation you said talked about how important community action is to providing services that impact the daily life of the citizens here in County. You guys don't do it. It's community action. Now, if community action loses 50 or 60 or 70% of its funding, are you guys going to step up? What, what implications does that have for the revenues? Maybe we need to have a discussion on revenues to talk about property taxes. We have the, the third highest tax rate, property tax rate, and you guys haven't reduced the rate in at least five years or six years. Has it been the whole 10 years?
I don't believe the property tax rate has been reduced probably in 20 some years.
All right. And so, so when he, when his property, his property assessment goes up, mine went up 60%, that's a, that's an increase in property taxes. Now, I get the homestead credit.
It's an increase in what you pay. Semantics matter, Mike. It's an increase in what you pay, it is not an increase in the tax rate.
But I made a presentation, I made a presentation at the last constant yield hearing that said that people with the lowest value homes will be paying more than their fair share because of the way it's being implemented. But my point is, I forget what my point is. No, I, I, my, my point is that you're going to need to have these discussions about how we're going to fund, what the new demands are going to be as they evolve over. There needs to be.
But, but right now, Mike, and not to interrupt you, but everything that you're mentioning is speculation. We don't know what the new demands are yet because they're not presented to us. Right now, community actions. Right now, community action's funded, correct? It hasn't lost any money, other than the transportation money that they were taking that we covered. We don't know what, and it, they don't know. And he's gonna come in with a budget proposal based on what he knows at the time, and then we're gonna have a discussion on whether we can fund that or not and what that means. We do it every year, you've been here, we do it open, we have those groups come in and we have them talk about, we need an increase in this much, or we need it, we're good with the status quo. We do it right out here in the public.
Well, no, I-
Yes.
Wherever, no, wherever I go, I say people should go to those hearings-
Thank you.
From March to May, and those are hearings where people come in and request money. It's not where you guys make any policy decisions.
Correct.
And I've asked, I've asked for another meeting after those, where you guys sit down and talk about what your requests are, and you're not gonna work on it. And you talk about what revenues you have and what revenues you need, although you need, in my view, the purpose of the public hearings and the, the open meeting law is to get input from the community. So, when you make those decisions, it's just not who you talk to, um, on weekends or wherever, but it's your, you're listening to your constituents. Hey, don't do that.
Well, I, I would argue we are, we're doing it right now, Mike. We're doing it right now.
That's not a public hearing where you're soliciting input from your constituents.
And you said it, you know what, legally, we don't even have to let you talk.
I agree.
We do every meeting. We let every single person in here that wants to talk, talk every single time. We haven't cut anybody off, we don't put a time limit on, we've never done any of that. And I don't know, and you correct me if I'm wrong, there's never been a question that's been asked, and we might not have answered it that night, but we answered it.
Well, but there was questions asked last time, and he went and did the work the last, since the last meeting, but you already made a decision.
And we, you know what, Mike, to answer your question, we did in the back room right before this meeting, which anyone in here could've come to. It's an open meeting-
Why'd you get no one came?
All right, if we'd have done it out here, would there have been anybody here?
Wait, nobody?
Yeah.
Well, and-
Everybody knew there was a meeting at three o'clock, Marsh.
As if the three, three to four o'clock is an executive session, basically.
It's an administrative session, not an executive session. Semantics matter.
At the public meeting that, that Mr. Knoll coordinated, uh, there were questions at the end. Why don't you have the meetings at a later time, cause I work until five?
And didn't I answer that question, that you asked that exact same question last time in the back room? Didn't I answer it?
It wasn't a satisfactory answer, this is somebody-
It wasn't a satisfactory answer, but it wasn't the answer you wanted.
This is somebody else asking that question. Why don't you try having meetings at six o'clock for the next five months as you're going through this budget process? And give them an opportunity. And if over that six months, then you don't have any observations where people come in and have these kinds of discussions, you can say, see, we have more empirical evidence. When was the last time we tried that? There's no empirical evidence. But I think that it, maybe I just have a different view of what the Open Meetings Act requires. It requires providing your constituents an opportunity to see the policymaking process, not just the gathering information, but the distill, distilling that information. Anyway, I'm gonna cut myself off because, um, I appreciate it, thank you.
Uh, we've heard from three of you already, is there anyone else here? Mikey?
Hi, I'm Mikey, uh, Mikey Burks. Let's take a step back for a second, it got pretty heated in here. Um, I mean, the problem is, we need people, right? That's the problem with the county, we need people, we need families, we need people to stay here. Uh, in order to do that, I, I, I came here to talk against the transfer tax. I'm not a fan of it. But, I think if we're gonna put through any legislation, then we need to all sit down with policymakers, with, with, with different organizations to come up with a robust bill to introduce. And the time it took me to, to do some research on this, instead of raising transfer taxes to get a pot of money that, that is not administered, um, the way they think it should go, because usually when a pot of money is created, it goes into a general fund and then it gets divvied out by people asking for money from a different organization. Instead of doing that, we need to make housing affordable for people. We need to cut taxes, which I talked to you outside about. It's like in Washington County, their transfer tax, if you're a first-time home buyer, they'll shave a quarter of a percent off the state's portion that they take. That lowers their tax bill that one time. A transfer tax, you're gonna make ten thousand dollars on one sale, and that's it. And that might be a deciding factor for somebody moving up here from downstate, having a second home. They may go to Smiths, you know, Blackford, Virginia, or Smiths, uh, Smith Lake, Virginia, Smith Mountain Lake, Virginia, which is similar to Deep Creek Lake here. Their transfer taxes are already cheaper, all the taxes are cheaper there. So, we have to make sure that we can entice people to come up here, stay here, get their property taxes to fund our budget, because it's, what, two-thirds of our budget's property tax? Sixty-one percent, or sixty-one million out of a hundred and four million, give or take. So, if we're looking at it that way, I mean, we, we want people to come up here. We need to make this housing affordable for people. And you're doing that, you're doing the right thing. I mean, Grantsville is a great project. And I think, taking the infrastructure out, keeping the cost low, getting it in the hands of the people is the way to go. But I do kinda feel that we do need to have just the session, a talking session. Uh, Lynn, Lynn, you're, you're right, Lynn and Lynn. Uh, I mean, there are things to consider. The more people we have, the more we can fund stuff. Our income tax revenue by person is only like sixteen million dollars. We run twenty seconds in the state because we don't have a lot of people, and they don't make a lot of money. We have more people, this gentleman here is talking about tapping into the, the lines that are gonna come through. They're gonna come through either way.
They're gonna come through either way.
Either way, if we can tap into it, tax it, get money from it, use that to create some sort of business, to create jobs, that's what will make this place grow. People wanna come to Garrett County because it's beautiful, we love it here. But we have to make it enticing, we have to make it reasonable for them to come up here, and right now, we're just not there. And I've talked to Kevin about it before, it's a vicious cycle. You gotta have houses to attract business, you gotta have business to attract people. You gotta have people, you gotta have places for them to live. And you're trying to, to dive into it with this Grantsville project and the other two projects. So, you know, in short, I don't really have a question, I just felt like I should talk, cause everyone else is talking. But, I don't think raising taxes is a way to really benefit this place. It's taking advantage of what we have and inviting more people to come here instead. Uh, so, I would be open to sitting on a committee and talking through affordable housing, putting together a robust bill for the next session in twenty-twenty-six.
Thank you. Anyone else, uh, yes, ma'am? Oh, I'm sorry, right here.
Uh, my name is Penny Coleman. So, uh, just because of who I am, of course, Google the Open Meetings Act. So, there's a couple of things that I don't know if you do, because I haven't seen it. One is that, um, you have to let everybody know that you're having an open meeting. Apparently, most people think that whatever you're doing in the back room is not open. Um, so, if you think it's open, you might need to rethink how you advertise. Second is, uh, when can we get to meetings, uh, the minutes from that meeting?
Uh, they're public record, we add it back.
So, is there, is it approved?
How do we get them?
Yep, they're all, they're all online.
They're all online?
Absolutely.
So, when will today be online?
When they're approved at the, after the next meeting.
Yeah, what, the minutes we approve tonight were from two weeks ago's meeting. Whenever, this, tonight's meeting will approve those minutes on the eighteenth.
From the back room?
All sessions are there, yeah, and then they'll be posted.
And, so, based on all that, that's helpful, so that we know how, what you guys, why you're thinking the way you are. But, I would suggest that those great reports, they sound wonderful for housing, especially in the grants and, but, you know, the, the same people, they'll just cut off Ted Stark, cut off Medicaid for people, uh, one of my doctor friends, he couldn't build, because they cut it off. Things are going to be cut off. The chances of us losing grants for housing by the time we get to open are really high. And, uh, I think what you need to think about is, what do we do if? So that you have some plans, so that you aren't shocked the way so many of these places have been, you know, like Hopkins Research, um, uh, housing programs, uh, uh, transportation, I mean, there's just so much that gets impacted by federal money. If we don't have the federal money, what are we gonna do? And it is not time to think about it later. Gotta, we gotta know beforehand. I mean, the president administration knew exactly what they were going, going to do. They did it chaotically. Some people said, suggest that was done on purpose. And, um, but we need to be prepared. And, so, I would suggest that, you know, the transfer tax, other, other ways of making sure that we have money to help our people should be considered.
Point well taken, thank you. Other questions, yes?
Uh, first of all, thank you guys, seeing that during this meeting, there was a front-end meeting not too long ago, where there were thirty-three people in there, and everybody had good ideas and good opinions, they wanted to get stuff done, but they just couldn't see the bigger picture of everything. I remember making a comment to them, I was like, listen, uh, we could give everybody in here a thousand bucks today and somebody would still be mad. And then, the one thing I was listening to this meeting is, I think we all agree on affordable housing is what the county needs. I don't, I don't think if anyone here disagrees, we need affordable housing. Um, one of the affordable, uh, housing, anyway, uh, I'm on a lot of different boards, some are public, some are private, so I don't care what I talk about. But, one of the first meetings I went to was about three years ago, and a lot of people don't realize this, this, this started a long time ago. You guys and your professors were reminded, it, it takes a long time to subsidize property, it takes a long time to get funding, it's, uh, so you're just now starting to see it, like the Grantsville project just broke ground not long ago, and it's finally real. But it's been real for a long time, it's been in the nation, and, um, the funding is, um, the, the whole thing, I have to be careful how I speak. But when, it should almost fund itself. So, it's a lot of volunteers, it's a lot of, uh, where do you guys get the money from? And then they sell them, and then when you sell them, the money goes back, you're just gonna go build the next project, and the next project. And we're talking about tax bases. If I remember right, the Grantsville project brings in about twelve million dollars in real estate value to Grantsville, I think, taxable. So, if you look at that, that's about a hundred thousand dollars a year Garrett County's gonna make going for real estate taxes for a project that doesn't exist yet, that will. So, I mean, it is gonna help, uh, theoretically, that money comes back, it is funded, helps the right things. But, um, um, I don't know where I'm heading there with this, other than I think that everybody, well, you can tell, everybody really wants affordable housing. Um, it's not easy, like so many people think you can just flip a switch and hire an engineer and design a project. It's, it's been a lot of time, um, you guys, thank you, uh, a lot of people don't realize how many meetings you guys are at. I have no idea how your personal lives, um, think of you. So, uh, anyway, thank you for what you're doing, I think that the county's coming a long way with it. I think you're starting to get, uh, you're gonna really start to see things move now that Grantsville's started. And hopefully it keeps going, hopefully it's accident, hopefully it's southern, and it just keeps going.
Thank you, thank you. Marsh?
One of my last comments is, what does the commissioner think of the state purchasing San Francisco lots for eight-point-one million dollars? And reducing the taxable income we get this county from it? I know, because Mr. Knoll told me that, that we were gonna get, uh, usage, what the-
Part of the pilot-
Yeah.
Project for state, purchase of state grants, yes.
Yeah, but we, you know, we're giving more and more of our properties to the state. It's not bringing the tax officer into the, we're gonna get money for usage. It's not gonna get anywhere, meet what you're receiving taxes in this year, next year, or whatever. He had to pay taxes on his land. We are no longer gonna get the taxes on a land the state owned. The state owns what, thirty-four, forty percent of the county?
Uh, give or take forty percent.
Yeah, so you give them some more.
Well, we didn't give them anything, uh, and we-
Did I have it?
Well, we don't have any legal authority to stop it if it's under a hundred acres, which it was.
But, I, I thought you, that they did, there was a limit of how many acres that could belong to the state forest land in the state.
The, the only, uh, in Garrett County, in Allegheny County, where I think the only two counties this applies to, uh, because the state owns so much of us, they cannot purchase property of a hundred acres or more without our approval. Anything less than a hundred acres, they do not need our approval to purchase. That purchase, I think, was forty, a couple of acres. It was, it was less than they needed from us, they did not need our approval.
Did you, um, voice your opposition to it, because of the loss of tax dollars?
Uh, we had a conversation with them about what they wanna do. Uh, one thing they do wanna do there that I think's a good idea, and I've been pushing forward at New Germany for a long time, is, uh, to pay accommodations tax on the rentals in the state park, which they don't have.
It's still an amount to anywhere near what your loss and revenue and tax income is from that property.
Well, i- it may or may not be, but, uh, again, we, we didn't have a say in it. Um, and right, wrong, or indifferent, and I know people have different opinions on this. Uh, if they don't need our opinion, if you have a willing buyer and a willing seller, I would not prevent you from selling your property to somebody, no matter how much you were selling it for.
Again, it's the state taking it. If I sold it to someone else, they're gonna pay taxes. The state buys it, they're paying no taxes.
But the good news, y- you're right, they're not paying the same amount, and no one can argue that. But at least in the last several years, what we got the state to do, uh, was to pay a pilot, which they did not do previously. And they do, uh, pay money, they basically, payment in lieu of taxes, but it's, uh, a lot more than they paid before, that we do recoup some money, and it's on a tiered percentage. Uh, but before, we were getting basically nothing, and now we're getting a relatively substantial amount of money from the state for the property that they own here. So, it, they, a- and if they hit another ten thousand acre mark, you know, which they may, they buy, they buy property of two acres at a time, five acres, ten, twenty, thirty, forty. Uh, I do not believe currently there is a piece of property they're trying to buy that requires our approval. I don't think.
There is property that we have not approved. We've missed it, yes.
Yeah, maybe one. So, there, uh, those aren't, those big purchases aren't sitting out.
Our prime governor just brought, he could use the money to recover some of the money, you know, taxing those loans.
Well, that's a whole different conversation for, for another day.
The commissioner of Garrett County ought to be relating to the governor.
Well, we are, don't worry.
My other thing, lastly, and I'll stop talking, is I think we need to hear from some of these other commissioners at the time. Right now, I haven't been here in a long time, and I don't know if the commissioners sitting there know anything about what you're talking about, because you're talking the whole time.
You don't wanna hear me talk, Marsh?
Sure don't. So, I think we need to hear some of the others talking about this, you know.
Yes, sir.
One last thing for me about the accommodation and transfer tax. You, can you, as the commissioners, put in a tax if you think it's necessary or you want it? Or do you have to have approval from somewhere else?
Yeah, a- any, because of the style of government we have in Garrett County, which is a commissioner-style government, any ta- any, uh, increase in taxes, any, any new tax, anything of that nature, is regulated by the legislature, but also would need legislative approval for us to do that. It's one disadvantage, I think, of, of being commissioner-style. Um, we would need the, and, and so, we may all think it's a great idea to raise the transfer tax, and, uh, the legislature could tell us we, we can't, uh, and, and there's really no recourse we have to that.
Right, now, you did also throw in the word in an earlier answer about this, you used the term budget. So, what would drive you to go a little harder, right, so that the session would be if, if you needed to put budget or whatever ahead? So, is there a budget portion or affordable, I, I might use a newer, attainable housing? That, that is a replacement word for affordable.
Well, to, and Mike, I hear you. Um, attainable means I can attain, right? What's affordable mean? Affordable to you is way different than affordable to me, it's probably a lot more. Affordable to me is a lot different than Larry. Affordable is what you can actually afford, but that's gonna be so widely disparate.
Then we're focused on affordable housing for workers in the county.
But what is that? What's that number? Attainable is people that can actually attain.
It, it should be noted that Grantsville is considered attainable.
What's that?
It should be noted that the Grantsville projects and then the second and third projects are not designed, to my knowledge, to be affordable, they're attainable.
They are not in, the, the, the difference is they are not income-based. Uh, the target audience is exactly kinda what Mikey said, and I think what everybody in here has the idea on is, you hire two teachers at sixty thousand dollars a year, they're making one-twenty. I know in Garrett County, that's a lot of money, at seven percent interest in the student loans, they can't buy a house at four hundred thousand dollars. They just can't. Uh, these houses in Grantsville, uh, between the townhomes to the single, uh, standalone homes are anywhere from one-seventy-five, one of the smaller towns, one-seventy, one-seventy-five, give or take, to about two-twenty-five, two-fifty on the houses. to about two-twenty-five, two-fifty on the house. Um, it's not income-based, so anyone can qualify to purchase. They have to qualify for a loan. It's still, you're getting a loan from the bank, you're buying a house, like, it's not, and- and community action cannot do that. I mean, back to- to Len's point, and maybe something that a lot of people don't understand, and, um, community actions' funding sources do not allow them, uh, to use their typical funding sources to build homes that are not HUD Section Eight income-based housing. Um, they were able to do that on a project in Oakland a while back, where they got eight units out of it, because we kicked in some money to allow them to use that portion to get eight units. The rest of those units, and there were a lot of them, uh, are income-based. So, it would be very difficult to partner with them without us paying a hundred percent of those bills, uh, because they would not qualify for federal funding, because the federal funding comes under that Section Eight HUD housing piece. Uh, so it's hard for them to supplement from their budget to affordable, attainable, use whatever adjective you want to, uh, because they're held to constraints based on their funding sources, which most of them are federal. And that- that lends to some issues with them trying to fill that void, uh, because I think what most people in here are thinking of where we're having a difficult time hitting is that middle-income, uh, portion of housing. Ma'am?
This is just a question, so it's a little ignorant, please, in my knowledge about legislatures. Uh, if you ask the legislature to increase your ability to tax, as in the transfer and the accommodations tax, do you necessarily have to tell them what you're gonna do with the money? Or is it under, is it then under your purview to dispense with it what you will?
Most of the taxes in Garrett County go to the general fund, which can be used for basically anything. The only thing that has, uh, language in it, uh, to- to lockbox it, for lack of a better word, is our accommodations tax, uh, which is set aside for promotion and economic development. Um, essentially. So, that money, uh, now, I would argue that could be a loose definition, but, um, that- that's the only tax that we have that's specific, that has to be spent on something in this category. So, transfer tax, we go into general fund, and you could use it for any function of county government that you wanted to put it to. Now, we could say locally, we're gonna use this money for X, um, which I think has been done in the past. We- we have not done that, but, uh, I- I think it has been done where people say, we're gonna take this revenue and use it for a particular project. Um, but typically, that's not the case.
There is money for fire and rescue tax.
And- and there is money for fire and rescue tax that can only be used for fire and rescue.
So, how do we go about getting affordable housing in the budget?
Well, in this year's budget, the budget cycle we're currently in, there is a line item in there for affordable housing that we did put money into. Um, so it's there.
Tell me how much?
Uh, what is that amount of money?
Two million?
Uh, it's at least a ma- I don't know, at least a million dollars is line item for affordable housing.
Uh, we can get that information. It's online, it's in our budget, but there is a line item.
There's actually a line item that says affordable housing.
Len?
Can I have a situated Anna Bill to say where it might go?
Uh, I'm sure you can make the ask. I'm not sure they would do that, because that would set a precedent that I'm not sure other counties would like to see happen. Seamus?
Yeah, I- I'm sorry. I'm speaking twice. That's right in the rules. Um.
Hey, we let everybody talk, Seamus. You know that.
I know. Uh, so, let me just say, um, I- I just wanna make sure we don't lose something we mentioned the last time, which I think you believe, and I do, and that is that there is this group, that the other group, the group there, the two teachers you talked about, that there are people who are above Section Eight and below that, need rental property, places for people who are service-
I agree.
Industry workers that- that.
And- and the McHenry project will feature that.
And then the other thing is, uh, just in, uh, I think that, speaking just only for myself, I feel like it does put the cart before the horse to talk about a source of revenue for this effort, before we talk about the effort. What I would, I would say one more time, I think it would be a great idea to have an open process for figuring out what the threats and mission of the whole project is, and to try to figure out what the pieces and steps are. Not to take anything away from huge amount of work that you guys do to do that already, but to get some public ownership into what it is, where we should go on. And so if you figure out a way that there's a place for people who need a voice for the service industry rental units, or for the teachers, or for whatever, and we have same people in the room, we can figure out a way to sort of have that discussion, and then you have a price tag. I mean, you- you, that, uh, then- then you have a way to say, okay, well, that's something we can't afford. You decide whether you wanna raise it or not. But I feel like if you start first on the revenue, you may- you may lose. So, and I think you said the same thing.
Thank you. All right. Uh, yes, ma'am?
Just one comment. I know Chris had to step out on Regina with community action. Just wanted to say that, you know, we will continue our efforts to focus on the people with the lowest incomes who need stable housing, and that usually is in the form of rental, you know, rental units subsidized or with housing tweaks voucher. Where we get stuck is we can't turn those over, because folks have nowhere to buy, that's affordable for them.
Absolutely.
And so then that creates a long wait list, and folks are kind of stuck in that, in that low-income bracket, and we just need, with Seamus, that- that next step up.
Yeah, I- I agree. Well, that's an economic development issue, too, because people won't take promotions or work more, because they don't wanna get a dollar over that threshold and be evicted from their rent.
And I think our game has been the low-income, um, housing tweaks vouchers and focusing on, you know, folks living in poverty. We're not really, like Paul was indicating, the answer for that, how for-profit, housing development piece of it, although we have a few branches that we own that we can get a little bit more money out of, but our main game is that subsidized people.
And- and you do it very well. I mean, I think that's one niche that we have, and to your point, there's no vacancies, because they're well-maintained, they're safe. Uh, but, and Seamus, you're spot on, a hundred percent. Uh, we mentioned it last time. The quality rental, you know, that- that's the first step for many people in their- in their housing journey. Um, and- and probably where we lack the most right now.
Regina, okay. Your, uh, first-time homebuyer program, there's a maximum dollar amount for the house. What is, do you know what that is? I, as I remember, it was somewhere in the hundred to a hundred fifty. I just made the program. My house was on a hundred and fifty thousand. I couldn't, I did all the education, and I couldn't use that percent. I would just consider that, when you're developing homes, to make sure that it matches at least.
So, we actually have two homebuyers, the Grant's family. One is funded by the county, and it doesn't have to be a first-time homebuyer.
And it doesn't have a cap.
Right.
Right.
And then we did chase another one that is tied to HUD funding through the, um, CBBG. And that's kind of a one-time pot of money, and has a, so we've got two buckets with slightly different qualifications.
Just call it like that, yes. Kelly Bernard would know the answer to that question.
Yep.
Yeah.
We teach this class once a month.
Mike?
I just wanted to tie up the semantic issue. Um, I think that the meeting that Mr. Knoll had, um, last week, I would characterize as a public meeting, um, because, uh, he answered everybody's questions like you do here, but there was also dialogue between the people and the audience. There were over a hundred people there, because it was at six o'clock. This is, in my view, not a public meeting, because it's a very selective audience of people that can come to a meeting at four o'clock in the afternoon. And, uh, before this meeting, there were never any rules, and they got, you had some sort of a discussion going on. So, in that spirit, I would just like to ask the gentleman from, did you say really, you're from the real estate industry?
I'm actually the chairman of the first director, but I'm not a person.
I just want to share my anxiety, because I- I agree with you that the property taxes are too high. Um, and we had a cost-of-yield hearing a year or two ago, where all the rental agencies were represented, saying that it's a burden on, uh, property owners who have rental houses or second homes, because they don't qualify for the homestead tax credit. So, if you're a rental or a second home, and yours goes up sixty percent, that's brought onto the tax base in three years.
Right.
I live in my house. If mine goes up sixty percent, that's not brought onto the tax base for twenty years. So, that is shifting the taxes to second homeowners, to rental properties, and to businesses, because I, businesses don't qualify for homestead credit. So, um, that's why I've been saying for some time, and I go to the, uh, cost-of-yield hearings, and I would-
I saw your presentation last time.
Urge everybody to come, uh, because they do need, in my view, need to lower the tax, because that gives relief to everybody. On the same time, I think they need to think about, which they don't currently think about, I don't think, um, is having some sort of a strategic plan for how the government's gonna be financed. Um, because if you lower the property taxes, you need to diversify your revenue, because you're still needing that revenue. That's why I think-
Personal income tax for you.
We have the second lowest, we have the second lowest personal income tax in the state.
Right, right.
But, so diversification, I look at the, um, transfer tax as diversification. It is a one-time tax. Property taxes are every year, it's carrying costs of the business. This, the proposal that he's made, that Len made, would generate about five hundred thousand dollars in income. And the property tax is the only tax in the county that has increased in the ten years that they've been here as a share of the budget. So, property tax revenues are going up faster than the budget as a whole. So, I think, as you're gonna wrestle this, I, I would, I would, I wish more people think about how you strategically think about funding your government.
Yeah, but it's also the transfer tax is a one-time tax. I mean, once it's paid, it's paid. Property taxes are perpetual. They go on. So, the more people you can get here, the more property tax that you can have. And that will last throughout. That's more of a long-range plan as opposed to a smashing bread.
But if they're too high, they're not gonna come here. They're gonna go to the other place.
We- we will have that conversation during the budget cycle. Does anybody else have a question or comment?
Can I get a commendation for only speaking once?
Well, you spoke well, and you emailed in advance.
You better prepare for that.
Do we have a motion adjourned?
The president.
Thank you. Thank you.